For your image to be recorded, please turn your camera off now. I'd now like to begin the meeting, starting with number six on the four information page. The agenda about recording of the meeting, okay, so item six, recording this meeting will be recorded. Number seven, public participation. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to address councillors' presence at this meeting regarding agenda items at the discretion of the chair. Members of the public will also be given an opportunity to discuss town council activities, not on the current agenda after the close of the meeting. The comments of members of the public and electors to parish who speak before the start of the meeting or following the close of the meeting will not form part of the minutes of the meeting. Before we begin, I think it will be helpful to set out what this meeting is about and what it is not about. There has been some confusion and some emails that have not been particularly helpful. It is without a doubt that everyone in this meeting values the importance of protecting the railway and wishes to have the station platforms fully accessible with much-needed bridge and lifts. Any suggestions to the contrary are not in order in this meeting today. As with any other development, building improved sea defences needs to be a balance between the needs of the railway and the needs of Dawlish. This meeting is not about the planning application from Network Rail to be heard by Teanbridge on August the 18th. That application previously came before the Dawlish Planning Committee and the view from this council has already been submitted. This meeting is not about trying to generate an alternative plan for that Teanbridge meeting. It wouldn't be relevant or even considered by that committee. This meeting is about considering if this council would like to address the issues brought about in the comments from Historic England and the Teanbridge Heritage Officer and from our own local Dawlish history group. Given the force of the response from those bodies, it would appear possible that Network Rail's seawall proposal might be subject to some modification, alterations or mitigations to accommodate concerns that have been raised. So I will repeat again, today is about embracing the improved seawall resilience and the improved accessibility, but also ensuring that Dawlish heritage is preserved in the process. This council will likely not be a statutory consultant in this process again. And if therefore we wish to have any say in the matter, then this is our chance to do so. I will ask the public speakers also to bear these comments in mind in their presentations this evening. So now I will ask for whether there are any members of the public who wish to speak at the meeting this evening. Please raise your hand. Do we have members of the public who would like to speak this evening?
It doesn't appear so, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So we shall proceed then with the agenda. So apologies for absence.
Chairman, none have been received. Councilor Wood is currently dealing with a patient and hopes to be at the meeting as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Okay, agreements of the agenda between parts one and two. There isn't part two on this agenda. Item number three, declarations of interest. Do we have any declarations of interest this evening? Yes, go ahead, councillor Patrick, thank you. That's noted, thank you.
No, no, sorry, no, no, I haven't spoken yet.
Okay, go ahead, please.
I'd like to clarify what my... Can I speak, please?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm a member of the Teanbridge Planning Committee and this application will be considered by Teanbridge on the 18th of August. Now, I have to be very, very cautious about what I say this evening. Now, I would like the opportunity to ask some questions later and hopefully you'll give me that opportunity, Madam Mayor. They'll be through the chair to councillor Taylor and it's about the proposed resolution. So, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you councillor Patrick. Any other declarations of interest for this evening? Okay, thank you. Item four, dispensations, to see if we can consider requests for dispensation if any, any being received. Okay, thank you. So item five, minutes of the meeting held on the 1st of July this year to approve, sign and adopt the minutes. I'm sure that all members have had a chance to have a look at them and read them. Can I ask if everybody's happy to adopt those minutes? Please raise your hand.
Thank you, Chairman, that's unanimous.
Excellent, thank you. So now moving on to item number six, the notion of motion. The alternative Dawlish seawall proposals, Station Section, Colonnade Breakwater to Coastguard Breakwater. I will now ask councillor Taylor to speak on this proposal. Please councillor Taylor, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, thank you. I am very pleased to introduce the agenda item six, the notice of motion, alternative Dawlish seawall proposals, Station Section, Colonnade Breakwater to Coastguard Breakwater. Before I do so, I would like to give credit to all those members, past and present, who have consistently tasked Network Rail with delivering full accessibility at Dawlish Station. Such a facility is long overdue and whatever our views on the current design, it is inconceivable that any plan for Dawlish Station would not contain this most important provision. Most important also is the resilience of our coastal railway and its services. And to this end, I most sincerely hope that tonight's extraordinary meeting is considered in the context that the current scheme may hit the buffers due to heritage considerations and that alternative proposals may need to come forward. As you rightly have said, this meeting tonight is not about making further representations regarding the two Network Rail planning applications received by Teanbridge in June, which will go to the Teanbridge Planning Committee for a decision on the 18th of August, as I understand it at the moment. As a statutory consultant, Dawlish Town Council has already made representations on these two applications via its planning committee on the 9th of July, with the minutes now approved and publicly available on the 30th of July. As members of this committee will be well aware, comments made at this committee deal only with the matter in front of them. As such, such scope to make comments are generally limited to planning matters and to whether or not an application is found acceptable. Alternative schemes are not considered, even though Historic England, Teanbridge's Conservation and Listed Buildings Officer and the Dawlish Local History Group have raised serious concerns about our historic assets, our listed buildings, their settings and our town conservation area. If I may, Madam Mayor, I would like to remind members of the concerns expressed by Historic England's Inspector of Historic Buildings and Areas, as summarized in the recommendation of the 8th of July, as I hope this may help set the tone for discussions this evening. It reads, Historic England has concerns regarding the application on heritage grounds. The scheme will result in harm to the character and appearance of the conservation area and the significance of the listed station. The council in discussion with their own conservation specialists and the applicants should seek to identify opportunities to address the concerns expressed. This should include any amendments to minimize the identified impact, further clarification on specific elements or consideration as to how the benefits could be secured through the planning process. Where loss of significance is identified, the council will need to ensure that robust justification has been provided to allow them to rigorously assess the potential impact. They should be confident the need for the works has been clearly demonstrated through the consideration of alternative options, thus minimizing the impact of the works on the historic environment. In determining these applications, the council should bear in mind the statutory duty under the planning regulations and to have special regard to the desirability of preserving listed buildings or their setting or any features of special architectural or historic interest which they possess. In respect of the conservation area, the council should consider section 72 of the Planning Listed Buildings and Conservation Areas Act 1990 to pay special attention to the desirability of preserving or enhancing the character or appearance of conservation areas. Your authorities should take these representations into account and seek amendments, safeguards or further information as set out in their advice. If there are any material changes to the proposal or you'd like further advice, please contact us. Madam Mayor, I trust this representation by Historic England makes it clear why we should consider whether a list of alternative scheme proposals to the plans submitted by Network Rail is drawn up for general publication to include also comments regarding the treatment of Coastguard's boathouse which faces demolition. I therefore ask that we note the foregoing and propose that we now draw up a list of such proposals for general publication.
Thank you councillor Taylor, thank you very much for that. I'm bringing this motion to notice a motion to meeting this evening. I can see that councillor Dawson has her blue digital hand raised. Councillor Dawson, please go ahead.
Thank you, I would just like to second that proposal by Gary Taylor and thank him for all the work that he's put into this. And just again kind of say that I think the heritage and the story of Dawlish is really important to how we moved, not in my times, but how we moved from being a poor fishing village to suddenly a village where there were permanent shops and employment. And there's a lot of steeped history in this town and I think it would be sad not to to take this chance to preserve some of that.
Thank you councillor Dawson. So we have a proposal and which has been seconded. So can we go to a show of hands of approval for that notice of motion, please?
Chairman, councillor John Pedrick has indicated a wish to speak with her blue hand.
Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor Pedrick, please go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
It has been up for a long time. I am going to read out what I've got because I have spoken to a lot of people and they have concerns and they do not want any of this to be delayed. But I would also like to request that we have a name vote, as I want it to be publicly known which councillors support this motion and which councillors do not. This is also a request that has been sent to me from a few members of the public who are very angry about what we're doing tonight. I do not support it for the following reasons. To bring this to the council at this time, when we have known about the construction of the wall and everything that is connected to it is nonsensical, why was this not brought at the beginning of the consultation months ago? To do this, the cost to this council could be astronomical. We do not know how much this is going to cost. There have only been two complaints registered at Teanbridge. The population of Dawlish is around 13,000. If they had the same concerns that we are talking about tonight, surely they would have written and asked about these things. So is this notion representing what the people of Dawlish want? Or is it representative of what some individual councils want personally? I know that Dawlish Town Council have been asking for the provision of a lift for many years and a lot of people think that we are putting this in jeopardy. We actually wrote to Network Rail to ask for this to be included. They are doing this at their own cost and we could risk losing this facility. And I know that many of the Dawlish community would never forgive us if we lost the lift. Especially, as most of us know, this motion is probably not achievable. For this and many other reasons, I would like to propose that we vote against a proposal and that we do this because the majority of people we serve actually want this project to go ahead as soon as possible. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick, thank you for saying that. I remember that we did support and we did contact Network Rail and supported that as a council last year or the year before to call for improved accessibility. And I totally support improved accessibility to the down platform and to the station. So thank you for making your proposal. However, we already do have a proposal which has been seconded on the table this evening. Can I just ask the town clerk, should I go for that first before I take any other comments?
Chairman, you would take that first, but you do have other people indicating a wish to speak. Councillor John Pedrick, councillor Terry Lauver and then councillor Val Morhood.
Okay, thank you. Councillor John Pedrick then, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been frantically trying to attract your attention because we seem to be moving along at high speed here. We've had a proposal, it's been seconded. Do we not go into a debate now before we actually vote on it?
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Do you wish to speak any further? Okay, councillor Lauver, please go ahead.
Excuse me, there are some points that, Madam Mayor. I'm not at all clear exactly what the motion is, well, the proposal. I think we want to have a list of how wants, if you like. But I want to see that list before I vote on it. I'm with councillor Pedrick, we need to debate this before we vote.
Okay, thank you councillor Lauver. Councillor Morhood, did you wish to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, a couple of sort of general comments. I'm a little mystified, rather than a list, I thought. My feeling is that having had time to look at these other things, we're talking about mitigation. We're not, as people think, talking about completely redesigning it at the cost of this council. That is ridiculous. But I would make one general comment. Because of COVID-19, we are in a difficult position. We don't only represent those of us who use the internet. We are here to represent many, many other elderly people who do not have access to computers and who also pay the council tax, live here and also have concerns. And I think we just need to bear that in mind, that we are not just representing those who are willing and able to contact us. We are here to represent all electors, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morhoods. Thank you councillor Heath, I see you've got your digital hand raised, please go ahead.
Right, okay, thank you. The reason why I also agreed originally to second the motion was not so much that it was in detail, that's what the debate's about now, but the fact that it is our last opportunity, as it's already been mentioned, just to review it as at least a scrutiny committee, if nothing else, and to put forward any ideas. It has been put forward by some emails that we're here to change everything. Well, I was astonished when I read that, but of course we're not here to change everything. We couldn't anyway and we wouldn't want to. If we all say what's been presented is perfect, then fine, you obviously vote against the motion. But if we look at it without sort of being hysterical, there are very academic groups, historians, Historic England, which is a government wing, who aren't very happy. So basically, if we are saying that it's just us, I think that's misrepresenting the councillors because we're here to make sure that everyone has a view. If the general public want to say something, they can. If they don't want to say something, that's quite okay too. But that doesn't mean anything really, other than what we've now come to the conclusion of, that there are probably things that could improve to improve the design. Just one little example, I won't go on anymore. The boathouse, which I don't know, I haven't sat there and counted them, but it's probably got at least 600 stone blocks. If anyone knows the number, please shout now, I have my calculator beside me. They're dressed stone, they're original. Basically, it's somewhere around, as I say, I'm not sure of the numbers, but if it's about 600, it could be more. Somewhere around quarter of a million pounds worth of dressed granite stone sitting there, just going to be pulled down and possibly demolished. Now, that is shocking. If we're not shocked at that, then we should be. So that stone should be used somewhere else, if possible, rather than just dumped. But my fear is it'll end up at the A37 near the smugglers and being drilled to pieces, which is what they're doing with all the other bits and pieces. Now, we don't know what they're going to do it because they haven't actually said. I think at least as part of our statement to Teanbridge, we should ask them what they propose to do with this. Are they going to demolish it and then break it up? Are they going to reuse it? Are they going to donate it to Timbeth so that we can do something with it or what? But just to say they're going to demolish it, boom, a listed building, without any comment, wouldn't do us justice. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Heath, that's very interesting. Councillor Prowse, I can see that you've got your hand up, please go ahead.
Chairman, sorry to interject, I believe councillor John Pedrick was before councillor Prowse.
Okay, thank you, sorry, I can't see the order of hands. Councillor Pedrick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I said earlier, I do have three questions and they directly relate to this proposed resolution. So through the chair, I would like councillor Taylor to answer these and I'm really hoping for really positive answers. Now, the first thing is that the list of alternative scheme proposals to the plan submitted by Network Rail is drawn up for general publication. So who is going to do this? That's my first question, who's going to do this? My second question is, when is it going to be done by? Because this goes to planning at Teanbridge in two weeks' time. And also, my third question is, what are the likely costs? Because presumably, we don't have the in-house skills to do this. So we're going to have to go out and go to a specialist that is familiar with building walls and dams and so on. So who's going to do this? When is it going to be done by? And what are the likely costs, please? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Taylor, would you like to speak now or shall I ask councillor Prowse to go ahead? Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'm quite happy to hear what councillor Prowse has to say before I answer the question to councillor Pedrick.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We were very carefully told by you exactly what we were discussing tonight. Thank you very much for that. And also thank you to councillor Taylor for the fact that, thanking those of us, and as I am what you might call the mother of the house, i.e. I've been here longer than anybody else and have worked trying to get a lift for more times than I can possibly think, including going to many meetings with Network Rail over the years and being told that we couldn't have a lift. So we aren't discussing the lift because that is not, I'm told, what it is about tonight. It's about the history. One of these meetings that I went to was in the days when we were having a new bridge put in, as you most probably all remember. There was a lot of the same conversation that is going on now about replacing the old bridge that went right over the railway. And in actual fact, I brought back to Town Council Planning a section of what was going to be the new bridge. And it is in fact a modern fabric and not an old fabric. So I am well aware of the history, but when I sat down with members from conservation, because again, conservation came up very strongly then because this is a conservation area and it is a very special line. I was told that conservation does not stop forward thinking and that this is what you are... And that we could in fact take the two and put the two together. I'm not certain that I've got that exactly understandable. But what I am concerned about is that we would use history to stop something going forward now. If we had a list, and I haven't got this list, I don't know why I haven't got this list, but I don't appear to have this list, the things that we would like changed. I do remember somebody mentioning to me the archway going through. But I am very concerned that we will allow history to not give us the best system forward for the next 100 years, because what the railway are doing now has to last 100 years. There won't be any more money in the future to come back and change anything that's, as you well know, that isn't right now. So that is my great concern. And going on to councillor Heath's mention of the stones, I quite agree with you. These are wonderful stones and there's absolutely no reason why we cannot ask Network Rail either to put these stones somewhere where we can be used or that we or Teanbridge can take these stones and use them somewhere else in Dawlish because they're obviously worth a lot of money. So I don't have a problem with your stones. I just have a problem with the fact that we might be trying to stop something, go forward, which this town desperately needs, and that is an upgrade to a station, which I know councillor John Pedrick, from his childhood, would remember, is not quite in quite such good nick as it used to be, councillor Pedrick. Anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you councillor Prowse. So councillor Mayne, would you like to go ahead and then councillor Taylor, please? Please go ahead.
That's the quietest I've been all day. I feel this has been rushed through really quickly tonight. It just seems like everybody's in a hurry to get it through without us getting a chance to talk about anything. It was proposed and seconded before we had a chance to blink. I would like to agree with councillor Pedrick that we have a name vote and that's what I want to say. A recorded name vote.
Thank you councillor Mayne. Councillor Taylor, would you like to go ahead? And then councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, certainly. So if I may, I'll answer, I'd like to respond to Roz Prowse's words first with regard to the bridge. Of course, we're talking about the footbridge, the conservation-style footbridge. It wasn't a rebuilding of the old bridge in the traditional materials. It was modern materials used very carefully to replicate the bridge that was there. And what a thoroughly good job they made of it. Compare and contrast perhaps to the plans that Network Rail have submitted. And the station is not in such good nick. Well, I think that the tale of Dawlish Station, its setting and its historic buildings are all wrapped up in the not in good nick that we find themselves. The protection from the sea as well and some of the reasons that we find ourselves with difficulty with the railway is because of the neglect that we've... to the maintenance that is required. So we're getting it all in a big rush and people are saying, well, what about this timeframe? Why so quickly? Well, the planning application only arrived for us to look at, as I mentioned, in June. So the rush, as I see it, is not us rushing to do this, it's Network Rail rushing. It's us responding to them rushing, which is putting us into this situation now. We haven't had a consultation on these plans. Councillor John Pedrick mentioned that we had a consultation months ago. We haven't had a consultation regarding this design at all. This design has never been put to the public before now. So if I can come back to councillor John Pedrick's list of questions regarding the list of proposals, who will do it? We will do it as a council. It's our responsibility as representatives of this town's residents to do the best by these residents. And yes, And yes, I agree, a lot of people quite like the new sea wall at Marine Parade. I would put it at probably greater than 50/50. They like the new wall. They may not feel quite the same when, you know, in a year or two's time, the beach starts to disappear. This is a question that we know that there will be an issue with erosion, with a bigger wall, more so with a new wall that is perpendicular. Because it will have a greater impact on the foundations, on the bed of the wall. So it's likely, and I'm not, this isn't my opinion, this is the view of Arup, who last year supplied a coastal morphology report for the Marine Parade section of sea wall, which stated quite clearly that there would be an increase in erosion of beach material. Arup also suggested that breakwaters or groins or beach replenishment would help. And yet we see none of that help that's required, seemingly coming to the aid of Network Rail or to Dawlish in a plan that we see now. So who will do it? We will do it. When by? Well, perhaps that's a question that members may agree on later. I would certainly say that we should aim to have this list drawn up this week, if not, you know, in the next day or so. But certainly sooner rather than later. And as to the likely cost, well, it's certainly, there are some costs of having this extraordinary meeting, if you like. We, our town clerk has been put to some trouble this evening. My view is that all others are here willingly. No dispensations have been requested, so that is our only cost. I trust that answers councillor Pedrick's questions.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Thank you, councillor Tamlin. So you've got your hand up. Please go ahead.
Councillor Tamlin, you're still muted.
In my opinion, we should be aware of the impact of development on the historical development and what opportunities there are to minimise the impact. I think this is called compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tamlin. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? I'm just looking for, please go ahead.
Councillor Pedrick was first, followed by councillor John Pedrick, councillor Ridley, councillor Morehead and councillor Prowse.
Right, okay. So councillor Lindup Pedrick, please go ahead.
Councillor Pedrick, you're still muted.
We have had presentations about this. And one of the things I don't understand is if it was discussed at planning, why these issues didn't come up then? And then why they weren't sent, as you normally do, conditions or thoughts and opinions with your planning refusal when you did it? I also agree with councillor Lisa Mayne. This was rushed so quickly at the beginning to try and get a vote through that that really does concern me, without us having any debate whatsoever. What's been made very clear to me is, from the people I've spoken to and the emails that we've got, people are happy with what's going to happen and they don't want us spending any more money on anything else. So as far as I'm concerned, I won't be supporting this motion. And I've actually asked, put a proposal forward.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. Just to answer your comments, when we had our Dawlish Town Council Planning Committee meeting on the 9th of July, we didn't have in front of us the report from Historic England, which is dated the 8th of July, which was sent to Teambridge. Neither did we have in front of us the report from the heritage officer at Teambridge District Council, which is dated the 12th of July, which we do have now. So that's just a commenting response to what you said. Councillor John Pedrick, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked three questions that I thought were really quite precise to councillor Taylor and I've received three vague answers. Now, could we just revisit this, councillor Taylor? Who is going to do this? You say we as a council. How are we going to do this as a council? Is this councillors plus our officers? So are you saying we don't need to appoint professionals? I asked when it's going to be done by and you said as soon as possible. That's quite a vague answer. It goes to planning in two weeks' time. And also, I asked about costs and you said there won't be any costs at all apart from this cost of this meeting, which is absolutely negligible. So will you please tell us who is going to do this? Are you going to do this with support of your colleagues or the officers? Who's going to do this, please?
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. Councillor Ridley, I see you've got your hand raised. Do you wish to go ahead?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just a couple of things. I'd like to urge the members of the audience to please stop gesticulating. It does make it very confusing and it is slightly disrespectful, some of the gesticulations you were making earlier. So please, could you refrain from that? I would like to reassure those councillors who have been concerned about costs because I can't see that there are any costs. We're not talking here about hiring an architect to draw up plans. What we're talking about is making a series of suggestions for improvements based on a set of circumstances that look possible to happen. And these are instructed and informed by the reports that we have in our hands since the planning committee met and made its decision at the time on the facts in front of it. I am amazed to realise where, for example, the atmospheric pumping station was. I hadn't appreciated that, nor even to the fact that there may be the underground chambers as were found in Star Cross. This is news to me, so I'm very grateful to the Dawlish History Group for actually showing that and bringing that forward. I want to make sure that when this planning decision comes to Teambridge, and I will be sitting on that committee, that we consider all of the facts, all of the issues and all of the concerns and consider it in the round on the information that we have in front of us. What I was hoping that we would get from this meeting this evening is an understanding of where there are concerns from the councillors around the table, what aspects we are particularly concerned about if we are concerned as a group, and what aspects we might like to ask Teambridge to consider when looking at any alterations, modifications, or I think you said mitigations, as a result of the various reports from the experts. And I think the discussion about the boathouse is a particularly key one. I sat through a lot of the stakeholder group meetings with Network Rail for a long period of time. And we did feed back a lot of information through that and into that process, some of which was listened to, some of which wasn't listened to. So I would like to now actually have more information from this group and the concerns of these councillors around the table as to what it is that we might wish, in an ideal world, to see more of if there is an opportunity, when such modifications, mitigations might be suggested after the planning. If we say nothing around this table as a council, we have no input into that. If we say we would like to see the boathouse preserved or move to a different location or the stone reused to something else, we have an input to that, which otherwise we as a town would not have, except through our district councillors sitting on the planning committee. And I think this just gives us an extra voice and an extra option to actually have those things considered by Teambridge when it comes to the planning, if it gets to a point of mitigations, because of the nature of the Historic England and the heritage officers' reports. And personally, I've never seen reports from those two bodies that are as strong as these reports are stated. They are quite remarkable, in my view, for what they're saying.
Thank you, councillor Ridley. Thank you, councillor Heath. Please go ahead and then councillor Mayne after.
So, Chairman, I've written down the order here. I have councillor Val Morehead next.
Councillor Morehead before councillor Heath. Okay, councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would reiterate what has been mentioned, that at the planning committee meeting on the 8th of July, we were not in possession of the Historic England recommendations, which, as was said, wasn't even written till the 8th of July. And neither were we in possession of this very, very comprehensive, as far as heritage goes, damning report from Timbridge's own conservation offices. I don't think any of us are talking about stopping anything or putting alternative plans. I think it's because we didn't have this available before, as has been said, now is the chance to actually refer to some of these things and to bring forward any concerns we might have. Before we rushed into proposals, somebody mentioned we hadn't had discussions. I think that's what we need. They don't have to be detailed as to which architect draws up this or that. It's not getting to that. It's as it would have been at the planning committee had we had this information in front of us, which we didn't. It is very serious and very comprehensive information. These are by professional people, not us, professional people in this field. And it is obvious with the references to the council, which should be minded of this or should look at this or is responsible for that. It's Timbridge Council who are responsible for taking these things into consideration. As far as I'm concerned, it's our responsibility to make sure that they do take these things into consideration, plus maybe any other specific concerns we have. Nobody would want to say we don't want the works. It's obvious that Network Rail need to protect the line for posterity. It's obvious that we needed lifts. We wanted those for a long time. That's fine. It doesn't mean to say that you can't say, when you're doing that, can you mitigate it by doing this? And there are some very, very good and simple proposals in these two publications. The only thing that I would add to them is, before anything else, I would like to ask Timbridge to require that Network Rail arranges a thorough archaeological survey of the car park area before everything gets lost. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Morehead. Thank you. Councillor Heath, please go ahead. Unmute yourself and go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Roslyn Prowse might have been before me, actually.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't see the order that people raise their hands.
Then I'd be following her, I think.
Chairman, if it assists, I had councillor Prowse after councillor Heath.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine, right. Correct me if I'm wrong, but would it be helpful as a suggestion to councillor Taylor, the Chair of our planning committee? On the 30th of July, which was the last planning meeting, which we were just grappling with these changes, we did send a communication to Teambridge of some of the points. I'm just wondering whether it'd be helpful for all the other members if any of us or the town clerk has got a list that they could read that list out that we sent? Because I think that might actually be a help to everybody to say that we've already put some stuff forward and it's only a question of what else possibly we might want to add. I don't think we put, I can't actually remember, groins out to sea, which we all know is very silly leaving it off, just a blank wall with waves hitting. We don't know why they didn't do that and they still ought to. That might not be on that list, but we could add it, for example. That would actually help other members who have said, well, what are we voting for? So can I suggest that perhaps we read that list out to this public knowledge now, anyway?
Chairman, I do have that resolution in front of me, but I would just perhaps urge caution. Obviously, at the planning committee, councillors Taylor and Governor Bradbury removed themselves from the meeting because they felt they had an interest. I'm not sure for my part, the direction that this meeting may be travelling in and whether you're actually going to be reconsidering a decision that's already been made by the council. So I think you need to just be careful where you're headed. But I'm happy to read out what was resolved at the planning committee, if that assists members.
Could I just add something there? If it just helps. I wasn't suggesting, which you're totally right, that we retweet our own planning meetings communiqué. It was just to let people know what we've already said, not to change it, quite right, but if anything needs to be added that perhaps, you know, we didn't actually think of or we didn't remember, they may want to add a few bits and pieces. And then perhaps they put their minds at rest. We're not here to redesign the station, which some people think we're going to try to do tonight, which certainly I couldn't do it and only any of us could. It's just we don't want to miss an opportunity to say, please look at this heritage and here are our suggestions. And that won't cost a million pounds.
Thank you, councillor Heath. Thank you. Can I ask the town clerk then if you can read out what we covered at that meeting? Thank you.
Okay, Chairman, thank you. The response was on, in reference to application 20 oblique 00922, which is the works to include reconstruction of existing timber downside station platform, passenger footbridge, alterations to existing platform surface, minor changes to door openings on the downside station building, refurbishment of passenger waiting room and refurbishment repairs to the fabric of the station building. And the second application, 20 oblique 00933, which is coast guard's breakwater to Colne Ains breakwater. The comment was as follows, that resolved by majority of members present and voting, that this council objects to the applications with the following comments. The protection of the railway is welcomed and acknowledged as a critical element of Dawlish. However, there are still questions regarding specifics of the design in terms of accessibility, safety, retention of heritage features in the conservation area and ensuring new elements are sympathetic to the existing structures and character of Dawlish as a town. Access to the beach for those with mobility issues is important and there is concern regarding a lack of ramp down to the beach and escape steps from the beach to the sea wall. The inclusion of the lift and bridge are welcomed. However, the lift design could be less brutal. Members suggested cladding in local stone and a low apex roof would be more in keeping with the original design of the station. Members would like to see as many historic features retained as possible, noting the comments of the local history group speaker and the heritage statement. Members agree with the concerns regarding the designs of the still-in basin referenced in the Teambridge submission. Members feel that a breakwater should still be considered as part of a long-term solution. And that's all of it, Chairman.
Thank you. Thanks for reading that out. Thank you. So I see that councillor Terry Lowther has his hand raised and then councillor John Pedrick. Councillor Lowther, would you go ahead?
It was next, Chairman.
Sorry, councillor Mayne, please go ahead.
To councillor Prowse.
Sorry, I can't see the order of hands raised. Councillor Prowse, please go ahead.
Right, okay. Are we all happy now that it's me? Right. Okay, well, I've got several comments because I seemed to get in a mess last time. I have a copy here of an email, which I was told, which I think you've all received or not, as the case may be, from Colin Fields. He's a town planning manager who looks after Network Rail property. And it is dated the 8th of July. And it is dated the 17th of July, so we've moved on to Helen Anderson. And she, and it says here, as I have done for the last couple of weeks, the application has now been out for public stakeholder consultation for just over four weeks. I've summarised the additional responses on the council's website. Conservation officer, no objection. Historic England, no objection. Town council, objection. That is interesting. This gentleman, I am presuming, is a very highly qualified gentleman and I'm quite certain he has gone down all the roads necessary. So we've got no objection from conservation officer and no objection from Historic England. And he has sent that forward to Helen Anderson, which I'm sure councillor Wrigley knows. We also received, in, this is in reply to somebody else, we also received from a member of the public, who I happen to know is listening to us, a response. And the last one says, the Daurish Town Council Planning Draft Minute, 9th of the 7th, 20, refers to the lack of the ramp down to the beach. The members should refer again to the fly-through presentation on the video above, which clearly shows a ramp at the northern side of the Viaduct Colonnade Bridge and again at Coastguard's Footbridge. One has also been incorporated in the recently completed works leading to the town beach. So to say there isn't one is obviously not true. Moving on to yet another matter, which I have brought up several times and having now sat here and listened to something that the town clerk has said in the way that we are heading, I am very concerned, and as I was chairman of the standards board, I think I have some knowledge of this, I am very concerned that there are members of this council who might be going to vote shortly, who will have a conflict of interest and certainly showing predetermination before they go to Timbridge planning in two weeks' time. I pass this over to the town clerk, because I do think it is something that we should be taking on board very seriously. And if things do not go as some people want them to go, I am wondering whether we are opening Timbridge council to litigation.
Thank you councillor Prowse. Can I ask the town clerk first to comment, please?
A word, chairman, it all depends what the crux of the debate is. If you're looking to re-debate what took place at the planning committee, then I would suggest that the declarations that were made then still hold now. As the, as the proposal is, alternative schemes, I presume that relates to something completely different and therefore that may not be an issue. But as yet, I don't know what the proposal is, so I can't get comment, chairman.
Okay, thank you. So the hands raised, I know that councillor Mayne has had a hand raised for quite a while, so please go ahead councillor Mayne.
Actually, all I wanted to say was that, I meant to do it last time, I second councillor Pedrick's motion to have the vote recorded and name vote. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mayne. Okay, so I know that councillor Terry Louth has had his hand raised for a while. Please go ahead councillor Louth.
Thank you, madam mayor. As you say, I've had my hand raised for a while, so things have moved on a little since my original comment. Do you mind if I have a little summary, to make sure I've got things straight in my head? My understanding is, well, certainly from my point of view, the first I knew of all this was June. So as far as I know, we've not any, had made consultations. We had a presentation and that's the first I've heard of it. And so it's all, it is quick, but it's quick coming to us rather than us picking it up and running with it. I'm also concerned about the letters from Historic, Historic England and Conservation Officer and in fact the Daurish History Society. Like councillor Wrigley, I think they're amazingly strong. I've never seen anything like that coming out of Historic England or a similar body to be quite so. I was going to say condemning, but that's going too strong, but certainly very critical of the proposal that's been, that's been made. I think that we do really have to take those seriously. It's not a question of us making lists, it's a question of us looking at the list that they have produced and seeing if we agree with them. Picking out the ones that we think are maybe feasible and then back, putting those forwards to Timbridge as a suggestion. As far as cost is concerned, I understand councillor Pedrick being concerned about cost, it makes good sense. But there's no, not necessarily assumption that it's going to cost. What they're proposing is going to free. You know, they're, they're going to put vast amounts of concrete down, vast amounts. And that doesn't come free. You can probably, you could possibly put less concrete down and face it for the same sort of money and finish it with a much better appearance. Because that's really what we're after, I think. We're not after limiting the effect. We want to keep the lift, we want to improve the, the station, all that. But we just want it to look more in keeping with the rest of Daurish. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to go on much longer. I take for an example that councillor Prowse made earlier, the plastic bridge. A lot of people, they go, it's not a plastic, for heaven's sake. We haven't complained since we saw it. Things don't necessarily have to be made of gold to look like gold, but they can look proper and in place and that's what we could do with. I'll take the point about making lists and sending it on. We don't make the list, we take the list from the experts and pass it on. Does that help?
Thanks very much councillor Louth. Thank you. Really interesting. Councillor John Pedrick, I saw, I see you've got your blue digital hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. I, I, earlier on, I asked three questions and I think I've managed to tease out the answers to those now. Who will do this? We're going to do it as a council. We're not going to appoint any professionals whatsoever. By when? Well, it's, it's obvious, it has to be done by the 18th, isn't it? Before the 18th, because the 18th it goes to Timbridge. So any alternative schemes or as councillor Louth has said, and the content of the Historic England advice, that will have to go to Timbridge by the, by the 18th. And as regards any costs, there aren't going to be any. So that's okay. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Councillor Dawson, I see you've had your digital hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Similarly to councillor, councillor Terry Louth, I put my hand up quite a while ago because lots of you've been talking. So some things have moved on. But I just, I guess I just wanted to address a couple of comments about potentially seeing, seeing the design and the lack of consideration to heritage, seeing that linked to people not wanting fair access, not wanting a lift and things like that. And to my mind, there's been, someone commented about it this evening, network rail funds were going to be paying for the fair access for all, long awaited, for the lift. And it's central government money that's paying for the resilience to the line. So I'm, I'm not aware of anything where we have been informed or the public have been informed that if it's not this design or if it, you know, if it goes forward, doesn't go forward exactly as it is, that we would lose the lift. And I think we need to be very careful about perhaps insinuating that to the public or whatever, because we haven't actually been told that. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Dawson. So I see councillor Taylor, sorry, has had his hand raised for a while and then councillor Heath. So please go ahead councillor Taylor.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. I very much support the, the notion that councillor Louth has proposed in terms of timing. Certainly from the point of view of wanting the, you know, the list drawn up quickly, I'd suggested this week. Yes, a very good starting point would, would be the, the list that Historic England have touched on. They are, they are asking for alternatives to, to come forward too. So I think there are, there are, I think the role of our council also would be to, to make suggestions of their own, to, to add to the list and certainly with the, with any considerations for mitigation that may be required, but pending the planning committee meeting on the 18th of August. Certainly, we do need to, to act quickly as a council to, to get those considerations put forward. So from, from that point of view, if the, in, in, from that point of view, in, in having a timescale now, which, which is certainly doable, in terms of, as I suggested right at the beginning, the, the cost to this council would, would be only the cost of this meeting. Then, then, you know, I'm, I'm very pleased that we've seen, we seem to have more, more agreement on moving this proposal forward.
Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Heath, please go ahead. Thank you.
Right, I think it's unmuted. Computer wasn't responding very well, so hopefully you can hear me. Right, just, just a little clarification for me and maybe others. There just seemed to be a bit of confusion, whether it's a smokescreen or not, I don't know. Councillor Prowse said that a number of heritage officers, I think, I think I'm right in saying, oh, I didn't write it down, including Historic England, were quite in favour of it, or didn't have any particular objections or some comment like that, I believe. Terry Louth has just said the opposite, which is what I was thought was the correct and standing view, that they weren't happy with it. If councillor Prowse knows something different, I'd like the explanation. Or is she talking about different offices? Or is she talking about network rails officers, which of course probably wouldn't object to it? Could I just have a bit of clarification for myself and everybody else? Because that is not helpful, thinking that, oh, maybe we've got something wrong here. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Heath. So I think that was a question to councillor Prowse, was it?
Yes.
Okay, so councillor Prowse, would you like to answer the question from councillor Heath? Or if you wish to go ahead, please do.
Well, I am just quoting here from an email from Colin Field. He's a town planning manager, network rail property and so forth, to Helen Anderson, who I, as I said earlier, I believe councillor Wrigley knows and anybody else who's been involved in the resilience programme will know. And it says here, he, and it's dated the 17th of July, councillor Heath. So, you know, this is, I am just quoting from this. And it says, the LPA's conservation officer, no objection. A detailed response and request for some additional information and some suggestions improvement to design. I've had dialogue with our heritage consultants and we will providing a written response to the comments next Thursday. I don't know what that is, I haven't got it. And then from Historic England, no objection. This is all I can tell you is that I have got an email that says in the exact opposite to what you are sitting, what everybody is telling us here. So here we are, we are in a state of confusion. We have our local historical people telling us one thing and I've got Historic England telling us something else. So it doesn't exactly help matters at all, does it?
Thank you councillor Prowse. We do have the reports that have been sent to us, the report from the Timbridge District Council Conservation Officer, her recommendations, page 15 to page 18, and the report from Historic England with their recommendations on page five and page six, which have been circulated to us. So I see that councillor Val Morhood has had a hand raised for quite a while, followed by councillor Gary Taylor. Please go ahead councillor Morhood. Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. In relation to what's just been said, there is a difference between objecting or refusing a planning application and recommendation subject to conditional mitigation. That is a term used by their own conservation officer. And on page 17, it gives the conditions recommended to be attached to 20 stroke 00933 NPA conditional mitigation. So there are things there which they want the council, i.e. not us, Timbridge council, where the planning authority, to address. Similarly, same thing applies to Historic England. There's a difference between objecting wholesale to a planning application and having recommendation. Historic England has concerns regarding the applications on heritage grounds and they also have ideas as to how mitigate, to mitigate these things. This is all, I think, they haven't gone to the trouble to come up with these recommendations just for the fun of it. And most of them, it seems to me, but I can only speak personally at the moment, address my concerns, which are to do with overall design stroke heritage, loss of heritage. They're not, there's nothing there which is going to stop the whole project or going to involve huge sums of money spent on redesigning the station. But there are things which are important to people who live here, many of whom can't access this meeting, who have not, because of Covid-19, had the opportunity to go to a public consultation. But these are things that concern people and they can all be resolved. Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Morhood. So councillor Taylor, I see you've had your digital hand raised. Please go ahead.
Thank you, madam mayor. The report that councillor Prowse has been telling us about is written by a gentleman called Colin Field, whose name you'll find on the front page of the application for network rail sea wall. The applicant, the applicant is Mr Colin Field. And despite the fact that Historic England have written what is, has already been described as a very strong comment, that's certainly the most forthright comments that I've seen. They don't, they may not mention the very word objection, but the amount of mitigation that they ask for, the amount, as I've read out to you in the, in the, in the summary at the beginning of this meeting, it should leave nobody in any doubt that they really, really don't like this scheme and they want us, they want Timbridge, they want everybody really to, to, to get their heads together, to come up with something better. And that's why this, that's why we're discussing this today. It's, it's, it's quite likely, in my view, that this, this scheme will run into, run into the buffers because of this, these historic, these heritage concerns. If we want to help the process of a sea, of a sea wall being built in, in, in a way that we would like, in a way that Historic England are asking for, in a way that the Timbridge Planning Conservation Officer wants, and in the way that the Daurish Local History Group wants, and I, and I dare say, a lot of members here tonight want also, then this is our opportunity to do something about it. Colin Field is entitled to his views on what he thinks people are asking for. He is sticking his head in the sand if he thinks that there are no objections. There are considerable objections. They are wrapped up in the sort of polite language that you might expect out of a report coming out from Historic England or from our conservation officer at, the conservation officer at Timbridge. So I would urge members to disregard what Colin Field has to say. He is, after all, the applicant. He's, he would say that, wouldn't he? He's making as best a case as possible for his scheme. And I don't blame him, but we must also be mindful of who he is, what he, what what he wants, and what we want to, as a council.
Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. So I see that councillor Heath has had his hand raised. And I think councillor Terry Lather did a little hand raise as well. So councillor Heath, please go ahead.
Chairman, may I just interject at this point?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, chairman. We do appear to be discussing the merits of the application that was received at the planning committee. And in view of councillor Taylor's comments just previously, I would urge caution going forward for, especially councillors Taylor and Goodman Bradbury, for the fact that they declared an interest and left the meeting at planning. The planning committee resolved to submit an objection and comments. If this meeting is now considering making additional points, it would seem to me to suggest that those declarations of interest hold now, and it would protect them, and particularly members of the Teanbridge Planning Authority, when they do come to consider the application on the 18th of August.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Thank you. So do councillor Goodman Bradbury and councillor Taylor wish to declare interest now? So that's recorded for this meeting? Should I, should I request that now?
You can do, chairman. It's ultimately for the members to decide. But it could, yeah, it could be over to challenge going forward.
Right, okay. So councillor Taylor, can I ask you if you wish to declare interest? You've had your hand raised. Please go ahead.
No. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I feel I should declare an interest.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Goodman Bradbury, did you wish to declare an interest as well? Thank you. Did you wish to speak, or please go ahead?
I think my interest stands exactly as it did for the planning meeting with the grounds that we're getting onto. It was not my intention to vote in this meeting, but I'm happy to remove myself if we do get to a vote.
Thank you, councillor Goodman Bradbury. Okay, so then I did see digital hands raised before councillor Prowse, councillor Martin Heath, I think, wished to speak, and then councillor Terry Lather. Have I lost the order? Councillor Heath, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, just basically to thank councillor Taylor for clarifying the confusion, really, that Colin Field is not an unbiased witness, shall we say. He's part of the application, so yes, he would say that. But we've got to be independent. And I mean independent, that, you know, I've come here this evening because we want to hear what we've all got to say. I'm quite happy to vote either way. I'm not really that biased. But I can't ignore the Historic England's accurate record of them not being happy. And I think, you know, if we just ignore it, why are we talking? It's not a lot of point. We should endorse it. If we don't do anything else this evening, we should, as a council, say we endorse Historic England's comments, and we wish you to adopt as many of them as possible without slowing down the progress of this completely renovated coast. But can you actually incorporate it? It's a government operation, basically. I'm sure they can. It's just a little tweak in here and there. And I really think we should shut the meeting up pretty sharp and just endorsing, have a cup of coffee. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Heath. Thank you for those comments. So councillor Terry Lather, please, and then councillor Prowse, please go ahead, councillor Lather.
Thank you, Mrs Lather. No, I have nothing to add, actually. I think we're in danger of going round in circles. So I was going to say essentially, what's the, I'll play you for the job then.
Thank you, councillor Lather. Okay, so councillor Prowse, you had your hand raised before. If it's something new, please go ahead.
Yes, well, it wasn't about the actual, what we are looking, well, it is. I am concerned and continue to be concerned from a Standards Board point of view about the fact that we have councillor John Pedrick, and I understand councillor Martin Wrigley, who will both be sitting at Teanbridge on the planning. And I, we have councillor Gary Taylor, who's portfolio holder for planning, and councillor Goodman Bradbury, who's vice chairman of planning. I am concerned that this application is coming before Teanbridge on the 18th of this month, and we have four members, or three members, and the portfolio holder of planning discussing this at a town council meeting. I would like more guidance from the town clerk, because I have a feeling that if we're not very careful, we are opening a litigation door. And I have sat in the chamber at Teanbridge when litigation, including many of these people that we're talking about, have faced a very clever solicitor. So I don't want to open any doors like that, and I don't want this council to. So can I have some advice, please, from the town clerk?
Chairman, if I may?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, chairman. An appendix A interest relates to a disposable pecuniary interest, where a councillor may have a financial benefit in the item being considered. That obviously isn't the case, and if it were, the member wouldn't be able to speak, and one would have to leave the meeting. Where a member considers they have an appendix B interest, the member shall not vote on the matter, but they may speak on the matter if members of the public are also allowed to speak at the meeting, which they would have been if a member of the public was willing to do so. So members are able to speak, but the suggestion is that they do not vote on the matter. Also, councillors Goodman Bradbury and Taylor excused themselves from the planning committee, which was their choice. They didn't have to, but they did. And so it stands to reason that they make that decision, whether they continue to be a part of this meeting for consistency, or whether they choose to remain in the meeting but not vote at the appropriate time, chairman.
Thank you. Okay. So councillor Goodman Bradbury, did you wish to respond? Please go ahead. Thank you.
I think I've already said that I will not be voting in this meeting, but I will remain in the meeting. Thank you. Thank you for that clarity, town clerk.
Thank you, councillor Goodman Bradbury. So I saw that councillor Wrigley had his hand raised, and then councillor Morehood, please go ahead, councillor Wrigley.
I think what I was going to say has been covered by the clerk. It depends upon what the resolution actually ends out being, as to whether I will consider whether I vote on that or not. At the moment, I'm listening with interest. I have not made any determination. I am simply listening to what colleagues on the council have to say.
Thank you, councillor Wrigley. Councillor Morehood, please go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is rather confusing in that proposals were already sent with the objection to Teanbridge from the planning committee. It's difficult to know at the moment what we can add. However, quite a lot of points, I think, which are pertinent, are in these two publications. I agree with councillor Heath about the Historic England one, but the Teanbridge's own conservation officer statement is even more pertinent. And as I understand it, please, clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, it is quite possible for the local authority, i.e. Teanbridge District Council, to approve a planning application subject to various conditions. So there is no reason, as I understand it, and I accept if I'm wrong, you correct me, there is no reason why they cannot consider these mitigations that are suggested or proposed or recommended in these two documents to add to an approval, should they be so minded.
Thank you, councillor Morehood. And I do agree with you and with what councillor Heath said earlier about endorsing the recommendations of Historic England and the Teanbridge Heritage Officer. I think I saw digital hands from councillor Linda Pedrick. Do you wish to, do you wish to speak? Please go ahead.
Just a couple of things. I just wondered why this has come to full cancel, and it didn't go back to planning. But also, can the members of the planning committee confirm that Yola emailed the Historic England report and the TDC conservation officer comments to members of the planning committee on the 7th of July? Because if that's the case, the planning committee wasn't till the 9th. I'm just a bit, I'm a bit confused about quite a few things. Also, the motion says we will develop alternative proposals, but then members are now talking about mitigations. And I think the fact that, that members talked about alternative proposals is what got, is what, one of the things that got the people of Dawlish uptight and upset. And just also to pick up on councillor Dawson's point. Yes, she's quite right. The Network Rail did say they'd give £6 million, but I don't think any councillor said anything about it. I think what was said was that people of Dawlish are quite worried that we might lose the lift. That's just their concerns, and I think we have to take into account their concerns, whether they're right or wrong. We have to relay them to the council.
Thank you, councillor Pedrick. As I said earlier on in the meeting, we didn't receive the Historic England or the Teanbridge Heritage Officer reports in time for our planning committee meeting on the 9th of July, because the Historic England report is dated the 8th of July and was sent to Teanbridge, not to Dawlish Town Council. And the Heritage Officer report is dated the 12th of July from Teanbridge. So we didn't have those when we had the planning committee meeting, considering the applications. Okay, I see that councillor John Pedrick has his blue hand raised, and then councillor Gary Taylor. Please go ahead, councillor Pedrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought initially that the actual resolution and the proposal was crystal clear. It's been proposed and seconded, and I heard it suggested now that we might deviate from that. Surely, we're here this evening discussing a notice of motion that's been proposed and seconded. Now, I mentioned earlier that I declared an interest because I was concerned about predetermination, because I was sitting on the committee on the 18th of August. And I understand, my understanding is that if I, if I vote in favour of this notice of motion, then I will be predetermining how I will vote when I go to Teanbridge. But if I vote against it, then I'm not predetermining it. Would that be right, Mr Clark?
Well, chairman, I suppose you could argue that you're predetermined by taking part in the vote at all, because you could be predetermined that no matter what is said, you're in favour of the application. And the same would hold for voting against. Ultimately, it's a decision for members to make. What you must do when you get to the planning committee at Teanbridge is to make sure that you don't approach it with a closed mind, and that you're still open to persuasion at the meeting. Obviously, that's open to interpretation by legal scholars.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Councillor Gary Taylor, I see you've got your hand raised. Do you wish to, do you wish to go ahead, please?
Thank you, thank you, chair. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just in response to councillor Linda Pedrick's statement about alternative schemes, well, alternative options was the wording used in the Historic England response to, on the application. So that's my alternative schemes, which would include what we may do around, what we may do subsequent perhaps to a decision, or with regard to mitigation. All of that are alternatives that I believe need to be considered.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Taylor. Okay, do any other councillors wish to speak? No digital hands are raised. Any physical hands raised? I can't see. Councillor Lather, please go ahead.
Madam Mayor, yes, looking at the resolution, that's a list of alternative scheme proposals to the plan submitted is drawn up. Yeah, fine. I'm quite happy for another list to be drawn up based on the recommendations made by the august bodies who have already written to us. But I'd want to see it before it goes forward. I'm not going to agree to any list which includes all sorts of ramifications of building a bridge between topless and whatever. If it's based on the sensible recommendations made by learned bodies and communicated to us already, which we talked about in the evening, I would, I'd be interested in taking a back in the proposal, but not if it's just open-ended. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lather. Thank you. And I think that echoes what councillor Heath was saying earlier about endorsing the recommendations of Historic England and the heritage officer, and including them in our list of recommendations, alternative scheme proposals. Councillor Prowse, I can see you waving your hand. Do you wish to speak, if it's something new? Please go ahead.
Well, it's all part of the conversation that we're having about what we should put forward, which I think is very important. What I am just taking on board from something that councillor Terry Lather has just said is exactly what he's saying, a list. And when I look at the member motion and the submission form, which I have in front of me at this moment, I, like councillor Lather, do not want to vote for something that is open-ended. I want to know what I'm voting for and what these alternative scheme proposals are. I mean, I understand, believe it or not, councillor Heath, about the rocks. That, I understand, that was a fact. That was fine. It's all these other open-ended schemes. And at the moment, all I can feel is, I'm not against any of our heritage. And in fact, it's well known that I know a great deal about the history of this place. I do not want to vote for something that is open-ended. So I'm being forced to abstain because I haven't got anything to vote for.
Thank you, councillor Prowse. Councillor Morehood mentioned earlier on in this meeting, and she was speaking with the recommendation from the Dawlish History Group report that has been circulated to us all about looking at the, doing an archaeology, I can't get the word out, archaeological survey of the railway station car park because of the importance of the atmospheric railway pump house there. And that's, that could be one of our recommendations. Councillor Morehood, do you wish to speak? Please go ahead. Thank you. Please unmute. Please unmute. Thank you.
Sorry, the button wouldn't work. Thank you. Yes, you're right. I would say one of, I would like to make a proposal that if we're going to make a list, that that would be the first item on there, that the planning authority require Network Rail to carry out, or have carried out, an archaeological survey of that car park area in view of what we know was there in the past. But as far as other recommendations go, they are clearly listed here on Historic England and the conservation officers' lists, which, if you look at them, they make a very sensible list. And as far as I can see, they don't in any way can affect what was already agreed and sent out. If you'd like to look at them, I mean, the Historic England says recommendation, Historic England has concerns regarding the applications on heritage grounds. The scheme will result in harm to the character and appearance of the conservation area and the significance of the listed station. The council, in discussion with their own conservation specialists and the applicants, should seek to identify opportunities to address the concerns expressed above. This should include any amendments to minimise the identified impact, further clarification on specific elements or considerations as to how the benefits could be secured through the planning process. That's quite clear, doesn't conflict with anything that's been said before. Then there's a similar but a longer list here from the Conservation Officer. Which, by the way, Historic England refer to constantly. They refer to what's in this Conservation Officer's statement. It says, for example, the panels to the seawall from the boundary with the listed building area up to the coastguard breakwater should be limestone, not concrete. Where the lower area of the coastguard's bridge abutment and stair is lost to the raised seawall, the panels should be fabricated in relief that the ghost of the lost lower area with its coined buttress, paired and keystone lanset windows, its handrail coping and plinth echoes the buried structure within. None of that actually precludes the development itself. It simply says, let's have a reference to the heritage. It says the panels representing the lost lower abutment and stair with its coined buttress, paired and kestoned lanset windows, its handrail coping and plinth only should be in limestone. The seawall, as elsewhere, continues in concrete. Lastly, it says, the panels should remain in concrete but be fabricated in high contrast relief. Colour, texture, et cetera, such as that of the ghost of the lower low bridge abutment and stair with its coined buttress, paired and keystone lanset windows, its handrail coping and plinth echoes the buried structure. These are things which would help to retain what can be kept of our heritage. And it doesn't impinge in any way on the main proposal for the works. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Morehead, thank you councillor Taylor. I see you've got your hands raised. And then councillor Tamlin and councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead councillor Taylor.
Thank you, thank you Madam Mayor. I think councillor Morehead's, what the information that she has found there is very useful. One of the, one of the things that I'd like to echo is something that an earlier member mentioned is with regard to the coastguard's boat house. I think it's, it's, it's an absolutely beautiful building. It's a handsome structure, it's long been neglected. It was one of the original buildings in the cluster of buildings, the coastguard's cottages, the coastguard's bridge, which since been widened, although the stone steps on the seawall side are still in position. The coastguard's boat house building is going to be demolished. And it would be a great shame and a loss to the town if it went the same way as the signal box, which is now just in our memories. I would like to propose that added to the list, as well as the suggestions that Valmore has, Councillor Morehead has come forward with, is that this building is offered to Teenbridge for, to offer, offered to Teenbridge for rebuilding by Network Rail on either Boat Cove or Corriton Cove. As I think they'd be a huge asset to the town and to our tourism. If that building was to be retained in a useful purpose elsewhere.
Thank you very much councillor Gary Taylor. Councillor Tamlin, please go ahead, thank you.
Can someone tell me whether TDC actually received these reports? And if they haven't, shouldn't they receive them? Because it's all written down there as well. Is it just us who's received these reports? I mean, when with the red tree in Weech Road, it was actually Historical England who actually stopped development. So they've got a lot of power, you know, on listed buildings. And I think councillor Taylor mentioned this, that, you know, if they came in, they could actually insist or stop work until things are addressed. But have these reports gone to Timmest? Anyone tell me, please, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tamlin. So the, yes, the report from Historic England was addressed to, I believe, one of the planning officers. The planning officer at Teenbridge District Council was sent, was dated the 8th of July. So they will have that. And I believe I understood from Andrew O'Tamclark this afternoon that both of these reports are loaded on the Teenbridge District Council planning portal now. However, we didn't have them when we had our Planning Committee meeting earlier this month. So thank you for your comments. I've forgotten, sorry, I've lost track of who else had their hand up. Did you have anything else you wish to say councillor Tamlin?
No, just a thank you.
Thank you, okay councillor Linda Pedrick, please go ahead.
For me, the clarity is not there with this. I'm not surprised, a lot of people are very confused. The first words are alternative Dawlish seawall proposals. Now, you, people are saying, well, we've got emails about this and that. I'm not surprised we've had emails about it. Then we've talked about mitigations. Now councillor Morehead's gone through a list, which I haven't been able to sit and read and digest. I know it's in the report, but it wasn't in the motion. So there was no list. So, and also someone else mentioned about an archaeological report. Well, we said there was going to be no financial cost, well, that will definitely cost. So for me, this, at the very least, needs to be reworked and come back with clarity about exactly what you are looking at before I could look to support this note. Because I don't know what I'd have, at the very least, I'd have to abstain because I have no idea what exactly I would be voting for. Would I be voting for seawall proposals, mitigations, archaeological reports, the list that councillor Morehead gave? I'm completely mystified now.
Thank you councillor Pedrick. Well, we've already had the suggestions, the, that we endorse the recommendations from Historic England and the Heritage Office from both councillor Heath, councillor Terry Lather and councillor Valmorehood. And so we, as I understand from their suggestions, that we endorse them and include them in their list. But councillor Lather, did I see your hand raised just then? Did you wish to speak? Please go ahead.
Yes, you did, Madam Mayor. I frankly don't see the confusion that councillor Pedrick is referring to. I think there has been a bit of misunderstanding among the public about what we were talking about. Before this meeting, I said, please can we have an explanation all about? And I'm pleased to say that the mayor did give an explanation and made it clear that we were talking about the future. What's going to happen at the station and beyond, and not what has happened up to the viaducts. I think a lot of people thought we were trying to rebuild the viaduct, the viaduct divided. We're not, we're not trying to rebuild anything. What we're saying is, yes, let's go ahead. We need the improvements, we need the protection. But while we're protecting the station, let's make it look decent. Let's not make it into a I'm going to use a rude word, I won't use a rude word, but a great concrete bunker, which is what it's going to look if we don't, if you like, dress it up a bit. Going back to councillor Prowse's, this is plastic that looks real. That's the sort of thing that's quite acceptable. As long as it looks real, it makes it look like the town is supposed to look and doesn't look like a bunker. We have said that the, mostly suggestions are contained within the lists that have already been referred to by several of us. There've been a couple of additions. I'm a bit worried about a couple of additions, because I don't want a list that goes on forever. You know, we could have somebody say, oh, what about this, what about that? I want to vote for something which I understand. I understand the lists which are in the three lessons that we've seen. They tend to cross over each other, lots of them reproduce each other. You know, they're not totally different lists, they back each other up, they're sensible, they're produced by experts. We will be, we will be wrong to ignore them. It would be not in the town's interest to ignore the views of experts. So we should take them into account and we should listen. A bit worried about adding to that list. I'll take councillor Pedrick's point, there's an archaeological study would cost money. And whether it's worth the sort of money that it costs us, I don't know. It would have to be considered separately probably. Let's stick to the lists that we've got. And other things could be added later, perhaps we could have an archaeological study. Perhaps we can have drawings, perhaps we can have a barricade up to the, in addition. But later on, when we see that this wall doesn't work, which is possible, then we can put the rest in. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Lather. Can I ask councillor Taylor whether he'd like to speak again and maybe sum up? Please councillor Taylor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Madam Mayor. It's been, it's been a very it's a difficult meeting for obvious, for obvious reasons. You know, we have a scheme which is going to bring resilience and it's going to bring improvements. But it's, and there is impatience with wanting to get it, wanting to get it done. We, we've got this one moment in time to preserve what is, what we can of the history of this iconic structure running, running through our town. I think we owe it to the town to do what we can. I would like to see the Coastguard's boat house rebuilt elsewhere. I think that would be a very good way of preserving some of our heritage. Not just, not just on an information board, but, but in the stone itself. It's a handsome, it's a handsome structure. It's been neglected for so long. And I think it deserves to find a resting place where it can be enjoyed for another 150 years. It's one of, it's one of Isabard Kingdom Brunel's originals. Let's, let's make that one of the first things on the list, as well as all of the other proposals that we've heard this evening about Historic England and coming from the Conservation Officer. So from that point of view, I won't be voting myself, I've declared an interest. But I would, I would hope that members would wish to vote for the proposal and for the list. And that that list is prepared in short order.
Thank you councillor Taylor, thank you councillor Morehead, I see you've had your hand raised, do you wish to go ahead, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a note about archaeological surveys. My understanding is that if any company wishes to go and dig up a road or whatever, they are the ones who are required to organise and pay for such a survey. Not the local planning authority. But it seems to me that we're actually coming up now with a list, which is, I would suggest, an arche, the Teenbridge requires Network Rail to conduct a proper archaeological survey of the car park. That further investigations into the potential future reuse or moving of the boat house or the materials. And that we recommend that Teenbridge Planning Authority takes into serious consideration the recommendations of their own Conservation Officer and the recommendations of Historic England.
Thank you councillor Morehead, and I totally support that. And was that, was that a proposal? We had the proposal from councillor Taylor, seconded by councillor Dawson right at the beginning of the meeting. But councillor Morehead, could I just check with you, was that the proposal for the list that we, that we put together for this?
I would like to make that a proposal. I think we've, we've talked around it, we all know a lot more now about what we did in the beginning. And I think there's quite a bit of meat in that, in that list without in any way countermanding the list that went through from the Planning Committee.
Thank you councillor Morehead, and I will second that. So councillor Heath, I can see you've got your hand raised. Did you wish to, did you wish to speak? Please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, actually, it's now been seconded, which is what I was going to do. But before we go ahead, it could be members also consider adding to that. Because we do all have concern for it, that the Planning Committee also considers asking that we're able to think again whether they should also add, not stop anything, but add a wave breaker that will protect the station platforms. Because that's one of the other worries, that there's no wave breakers and it's still going to crash into it at that position. Whether, in other words, that they have a second look at it to see whether what they've said is sound enough. Otherwise, all the other bits and pieces, as mentioned, that we endorsed Historic England's report, etc, the car park survey, boat house to be rebuilt, either Boat Cove or nearby. I would endorse that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Heath, thank you councillor Morehead, did you wish to speak again? And then councillor Prowse and councillor Taylor.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt again. I just think that what councillor Heath just referred to is what is on our original list submitted by the Planning Committee. We cannot revisit that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morehead. Councillor Prowse and then councillor Taylor.
Well, I find myself in a very difficult position here because I have no problem with the list. But I, and I don't have any problem with the idea of moving the coastguard, if that is possible. I have severe problem with the idea of digging up the car park, which I understand is privately owned by Network Rail. We do have another pumping house in Starcross, which is now a cottage, I might add. But if we've got to vote for all this on block, you're putting me in a position where I don't believe in all of it. So the list I can understand from Historic, from our history, our history experts. But the things that we are starting to add in, I think should be voted on individually.
Thank you councillor Prowse, councillor Wiggley and then councillor Morehead, please, thank you.
Thank you Chair, I'd just like to ask a question of clarification. I was presuming that when an archaeological survey was being talked about, it would be a requirement on Network Rail to do one at their cost on their land to determine what was underneath it. The pumping house in Starcross is in fact a private club and boat house and other things. And underneath that were found amazing caverns that were then immediately given, I think it was grade one listed status, which has caused all sorts of problems with road alterations that were wanted in Starcross. But they are fascinating caverns, if you haven't seen the pictures, they're worth looking at.
Thank you councillor Wiggley, councillor Morehead, please go ahead. Thank you.
Just a further clarification, Madam Mayor. As I understand it, these days, an archaeological survey can be one of a site visit of geophysics, ground testing. And then small test drills if they think there is something there. And with miniature cameras and so forth, it does not entail necessarily large areas of excavation. But it is something, particularly if there do happen to be underground caverns there. It's very important with all the heavy vehicles which are going to be going in there for this massive construction. It doesn't have to be what we think of as, oh,